Hold on. Just up now. Yeah, there she is.
Okay, I'm gonna call the April 22nd Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting to Order. This meeting's also on Zoom. You can dial 719-359-4580, webinar ID 863-8055-0264. Let's do roll call.
Commissioner Connerton.
Yeah.
Commissioner Cowan.
Here.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Here.
Chair Waller.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Commissioner Houghton.
Here.
Commissioner Gaiman.
Here.
We have four of them.
Okay. Do we want to, for the record, introduce or talk about our alternates who are so happy you're here?
I'll take that opportunity. So also present is Alternate Commissioner Marjorie Lear and Alternate Commissioner Patrick Corcoran.
Okay, thank you. Welcome. I'm sure you'll have plenty of opportunity to move up here pretty quick. That's kind of how it rolls. Okay, we'll do the receipt of the minutes. Is there a motion for a receipt of the March 25th, 2025 meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Connerton. Commissioner Sipperly.
And I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments, additions, deletions on the meeting minutes? Okay, let's call it, let's call a quick vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any comments from citizens appearing on items not on the agenda? I don't see anyone online either, Zoom, so assume that no one's here, no comments. Okay, we'll move on to new items. And Hannah, are you doing both of them?
I am.
No, we're so lucky. Okay, the first one is a comprehensive plan overview. Hannah?
Good evening, Planning and Zoning Commission, Hannah Klaasman, Community and Economic Development Director. And tonight, we don't have any official applications, so there's no action items. This is meant more to be about education updates and allowing you the opportunity to ask questions. We have the comprehensive plan first, and then we were meant to give you an update on the Workforce Housing Advisory Board. I will attempt to do that. That was meant to be Kevin. He had a family emergency taking him away. So that will be more brief than intended, and you guys can ask questions about that as well. So the purpose of tonight with the comprehensive plan, this is a massive document that the city undertakes. It's visionary and long future looking and is important in how you guys make decisions on a variety of applications. So I really wanted to take an opportunity to kind of dive into it, look at the different components. It's a large document. So I never expect anyone to sit down and read it in one setting, and we kind of forget about some of the things in it. So this is meant to give you an overview, and I welcome all the questions from Commissioners on the dais as well as alternates, Marjorie and Patrick, just kind of shout it out if you guys would, that'd be fine. So I wanted to include a little bit of the background and public engagement. Jim Hardcastle, our long-range principal planner, took over this project about halfway through and brought it to the end. Prior to that, Trent Hyatt, who was our senior planner, was the project manager for this because it is, it takes so long to do and has so many public engagement touching points, which are listed here. Open houses, picnics, steering committee meetings, which was Planning and Zoning Commission, online surveys, pop-up events, focus group meetings, boards and commissions, all the liaisons, all of staff, all of the community, to really get to the end of this, which is meant to be a community-approved plan for the City of Glenwood Springs for the next 15 to 20 years. I think you guys already know kind of the plan purpose, but it outlines our vision, goals, and policies, foundation for growth and development going forward of how we want the city to develop in this timeline. It's also a framework for decision-making, which is why we're talking about it tonight, related to land use, which is your guys' jam, and is a mechanism for public input and engagement. So that's a, and that's a big piece. Like, there are so many public engagement pieces this document should reflect. At least, you know, you can never get a community to reach full consensus, but a lot of people had their say in comments into this document. So it is powerful and useful for you guys and the rest of city staff as well. I threw in just a little bit of the purpose of the comprehensive plan. A lot of talk goes about comprehensive plan compared to our zoning code. They are very different, as you guys have mentioned before. Our comprehensive plan is an advisory document. I've highlighted advisory document and then lower down is not legally binding. Those were the two most important points to pull out of the purpose of the comprehensive plan. But so it is more of a guide, and we use it quite frequently, but unlike the zoning code that is very regulatory and must be met, the comprehensive plan is more of a guide with, you know, encouraging policies and goals. This is just a little bit of how the plan is broken out. Got the vision, goals, and with our update, we did a pretty healthy change where we included strategies and actions in a very real way. So if you've looked at the comprehensive plan, hopefully you see those charts that have headers of the different categories and then all the strategies and actions that are meant to implement the goals and the vision of the city in a variety of ways. So really, that's more of a roadmap for staff and our elected officials and boards and commissions to use of like, how do we actually get to that goal? Here's eight strategies. And then we can look if we've actually done them year after year. Another component of the comprehensive plan is the future land use map. We refer to it as the flume. So I've dropped this here, and we have a layer that you can actually zoom in further and get like parcel by parcel, because this one's a little challenging. Am I in this one? And so the, these are, this is very similar to our zoning map, but again, this is the vision for the future. And so you'll notice a lot of times, if you're looking at the flume, the designation in the future land use map doesn't quite match up with what the current zoning is. And so we do have those discrepancies from time to time. I pulled out some of the key aspects of a future land use map that is a vision for the future, a guide for development. So we, on a variety of projects, will look at this document and tell you, Planning and Zoning Commission, the proposed project is in line with the comprehensive plan, future zoning, that's indicated here. And sometimes, what I dropped on the bottom is this is amendable, so we can get requests or we have projects come in that don't match, and we'll, staff will be very upfront, like, this proposal is not in line with the future land use map. And we can amend that if we find that to be appropriate, if situations have changed, circumstances have changed. And that is something that we would change with Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council if that arose. I've included our vision and goals. Hopefully you read them. Just for everyone's knowledge, the goals are in no specific priority order. So even though promote long-term, sustainable, and diverse economic development is at the top, it doesn't mean that it is any more important than the ones that follow. And our vision is kind of a combination of all those goals into a nice little paragraph statement. And we'll kind of get into some of these, but hopefully you guys are at least a little bit familiar with this long list of goals. And what is probably immediately apparent is some of these goals will often compete with each other for dominance in a project, and that's what I really want to focus on with you guys tonight. So your criteria for review, this is where staff is really using the comprehensive plan when we come to you with a project. So on the left are all the applications that require the criteria. The project is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and the purpose of this code. That exists in all of those on left. There are some that we don't have this for, a few that you guys, one that you guys see and then two that you don't. An administrative adjustment and a right-of-way approachment is not something that Planning and Zoning Commission sees. You do see the variance. The reason why a variance doesn't have this criteria in it, because the variance has very specific seven criteria that must be met on its own, so it's a little bit different. But so your Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council are meant to review, when you have any of these applications, are meant to review, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? Sometimes, that's a hard question to answer, and sometimes it's easier. So let's get into competing priorities. Like I've mentioned, the comprehensive plan is meant to be a guide, and the way that I think about it at the staff level is it's all about balance. We've got a long list of goals. You cannot meet every goal with every project. And so I've got a few kind of fun scenarios for you guys to think about when you're seeking the balance. These are in no way actual projects, completely fictional, but example findings. If you guys are reviewing something and you're trying to get to a point using the comprehensive plan to either support or oppose a project that's before you. And this is just demonstrating how you can be, you will frequently be in a little bit of a quandary, and that you'll have competing goals. First one, while the development of 100 affordable apartment units is supported by the comprehensive plan, the historic value and cultural preservation of the Hotel Colorado is paramount. So this is a project that's proposing to turn the Hotel Colorado into affordable housing. That's going to be one where you're like, hmm. The comprehensive plan supports affordable housing a lot. The comprehensive plan also supports cultural preservation and historic preservation. So this is just kind of a exercise. I tried to think of the most outlandish scenarios for you guys, where you'd be stuck, like, uh-oh. I don't think you'd be stuck on this one, but Carolyn's shaking her head. Obviously not. But this is a way, this is what I want you guys to think about when you're using the comprehensive plan. There will be moments where you're like, the comprehensive plan has competing goals for this project, and you kind of need to find a balance. One might be more important or more appropriate for the project before you. I chose pretty outlandish ones that are fairly easy to decide. Yours, your job won't be this easy. Second one, while a double-decker stacked Grand Avenue Bridge would address some transportation needs, Glenwood's character and downtown vibrancy would be far too impacted. So you're kind of, you're, you're going to fall into categories where you're going to prioritize a goal, or it's more appropriate to prioritize it because the impact is so much greater, is the way that I kind of look at it.
And in these scenarios, said bridge, oops.
Said bridge?
We got.
I think we can probably turn all the mics on if you guys behave.
Yeah.
Excellent. Less formal is what I'm going for tonight. You promised something.
Oh, okay.
Can't do.
It just goes one at a time.
Okay. So in said example, that bridge could actually meet the code, but we would be using the comprehensive plan to potentially deny the project.
You could certainly use the comprehensive plan in your findings to support what your argument is.
Right. It's like, well.
So the comprehensive plan is a plan. It's not binding. It doesn't have the force of law, but it's certainly, as you are looking at components of the code and looking for findings that support the position that, say, you wanted to take, that double-decker is not appropriate. You know, you might be, I don't know, looking at the scale and mass and could rely on the comprehensive plan about maintaining the vitality of downtown and the impacts that that would have to kind of bolster those findings as to why you said no and whatever provision of the code that you're looking at as the hook, the legal hook to say no. So it can provide kind of colored commentary, but it's not, it's not the enforceable word or the enforceable law that the code is.
And I guess, I guess the question kind of is an example of sometimes we have these applications and they meet all of the code requirements, and yet we still don't feel like it meets the comprehensive plan or maybe the vision that, of Glenwood. And so that is
Yeah, and that is
potentially how we could reference.
It's potentially how you could. I think there are times, and I'll use your former member, Marco, when we were talking about the BLD project, and, you know, there was a lot of consternation over that project, right? But it, at the time, it hit all the marks in the code and didn't ask for anything outside of the code. And so they're really, you know, he and I had a conversation after that project to, you know, run its course. And I said, I know you didn't like it, like, what, you know, and he's like, sometimes there's not a lot you can do. Sometimes it just hits all the notes in the code the way it's supposed to, even if I don't like the way it looks, because the way it looks isn't one of the criteria, unless it is one of the criteria, right?
Right.
John?
I just
Oh, everyone's just thinking this. Well, so I have a question too, then. So, I mean, as you go through, it's a very subjective kind of thing. I mean, as you know, as you even look at these, you know, the Hotel Colorado, I mean, you have people on both sides that can be, you know, I don't know, you know, fighting over it. I mean, it seems like an obvious one to me. You wouldn't do, but it, but a lot of them are very, are a lot closer, that it's a very subjective thing, and so and, and, and we're typically just a recommending body on these, on those larger projects. In fact, the way it is now, greater than before, so we're pretty much a recommending body on most of them, but, but you know what, that, you know, that, that's what makes it be pretty interesting, I think, with the comp plan of the subjectiveness of where do you sit and what glasses do you have on?
And I think from what Carl just mentioned, where you are in those situations where if it checks all the boxes, which admittedly, and you guys know, that doesn't happen very often. And one of the application types that you guys see and you have the authority to approve is your special use permit. And a special use permit, I would say, is one of those applications where the comprehensive plan can actually be very, very useful to you. So I didn't include this in a slide, but any of the relief, the flexibility and relief measures where you have more scrutiny because of what they're applying for in that process is dictated by code. Special use permits, variances, design variances, any of the relief from code requests, you are meant to gauge the appropriateness, and so the comprehensive plan can really be your guiding force there. Maybe less so, you know, you can make arguments with it on some of the larger projects. If it meets everything, you won't necessarily be able to lean on the comprehensive plan to support a denial. You could certainly support it in your comments of why you, you know, things of that nature, but so that is a really good point to point out. Some of these applications, you're going to have a little bit more leeway there, and the comprehensive plan should really be your relying guide to reach your appropriateness decision.
And the reason this is important to understand and use appropriately is if we deny things that should be approved by code, we as a municipality can get sued by these applicants, correct?
Yeah.
I've got Carl's here.
I know, I know.
That's why I'm here. And, and that's why, you know, it's, just to stray for a moment, but you know, when we're thinking about the findings and your discussion and all of those things and the reasons why I have always asked that you guys make a motion first and then have the discussion, it matters, right? If we do get challenged, that record that you create up there on the dais, how you viewed these things, how you applied them, it matters as that gets reviewed by a court.
And, and this kind of segues to a question I had, you know, we understand that we get an application, we can make a decision, staff makes their recommendation, but you often give us legal advice while we are on the dais. How should we interact with that? That legal advice, I mean, it
It's dangerous asking Carl that question.
No, I mean, I think that I, I try very hard not to announce that you just exposed us.
Right.
So you'll figure me out as we work together a little bit on when I'm a little concerned about where you're at. Sometimes I'll just tell you that you probably, like, that's just not an area. I mean, we had a little bit of that conversation that sometimes I, I know you want to talk about it, but it's not helpful to have you do it, and you don't have authority to change it. So I may just be that blunt. And I think my role is both to protect the process, but also kind of help steer you back to the decision-making box that you have to work with.
So in the instance where, you know, we have someone making public comment and saying that something is a legal concern, and you're saying, no, it's not, we listen to you.
I would certainly hope so. I have done my job badly if you're, if you develop some, some level of rapport and trust in that. No, absolutely. And I think that you know, I guess what I would say is that in that instance, usually, you know, I'm hanging the, your decision, my opinion, how it's going to turn out in the end, like, that's all kind of mixed together. And know that my role is to primarily keep a clean process and make sure that everybody is heard and that the decision that you make is based on the actual record you, in front of you, and is a decision that you can make.
Right.
Keep going.
So my last fund, so we talked about the Hotel Colorado being affordable housing units, probably not. Double-decker stacked Grand Avenue Bridge, probably not going to be great. And the last one that I came up with, racking my brain, to do natural resources versus maintaining Glenwood as a regional center is a, a floating restaurant on the Roaring Fork River. Doesn't that sound lovely?
If there's gambling.
And which surely
Sounds risky.
Right?
Yes.
Sounds fun. I would drive at least 45 miles to go see that, so a regional draw. The impact to the river probably is a little too substantial or too risky. So these are just some fun examples that you guys are going to be, have in front of you constantly about these competing goals that are in the comprehensive plan. So I only mention this of try to find the balance, and if you're using the comprehensive plan to say the comprehensive plan doesn't support this, maybe try a little bit more of a balanced approach of like, the comprehensive plan does point out that this is a goal, but I'm viewing this goal as more impacted, and so that's prioritized. Or in your support as well, because a lot of times, projects are going to have a lot of things that are supported and opposed in the comprehensive plan, so kind of allowing for both. Two things can be true, which is a motto that I've embraced in life recently, so you guys should too. And lastly, I wanted to point this out before we actually go to the plan. This is a great thing that was added towards the end. Some of you might remember this, the Glenwood character argument. We used to have a lot of small-town character, preserve small-town character, and the questions always come up, what on earth does that mean? It's going to mean 100 different things to 100 different people. So what we wanted to do, and this was a great addition to the comprehensive plan, this is a table of the things that we value, we being the community. And so we list it, and then we list every point in the document that is mentioned. So this is a great reference for you guys. If you're really wanting to push sustainable tourism as your argument, here's a nice list of where you go in the plan. And it's also just a kind of a comprehensive look at what we do value, what has been decided as the values of this community. Obviously, those will shift around with any given project, but it's a good starting point. So I really like this addition that happened in the comprehensive plan. I think that is it. So I was going to pull up, we have two documents that you guys can use. One is the, might need to stop sharing, then share again. One is the comprehensive plan brief, which is meant to be kind of a quick quick scan of the vision, goals, strategies, and the future land use map. These are both available on City of Glenwood Springs website under the Planning Department. If you go to Long Range Planning, both of these are available. So we wanted to have a brief that is like the executive summary of the comprehensive plan, so you don't have to flip through 100 pages to kind of get to where you're going. So this is only nine pages, I believe, and Jim worked very hard at making this concise, which is challenging with the large document, but getting the points that we thought staff and our commissions would use most frequently. And then we've got the very large document, which is the full update, which is 200 pages. So now you see why we gave you the brief. The full document is going to go into much more depth in categories that are listed as strategies and actions. There's full pages for every category. So if you're in the brief and you're looking at a strategy or a goal, and you want to know more about how it was arrived there, then I would say, switch over to the full plan and scan through those chapters to see how that was arrived at. But in the brief, this one's really helpful. Staff uses it a lot because we have to reference this quite a bit. So you've got that Glenwood character that I pulled for you there, the vision and the goals, all of our lovely goals. And a little disclaimer here, I think Jim threw this in, this document is designed to be a tool for quick reference of the full comprehensive plan, but it's not the entire thing, so please use both. There's our lovely map. And then, I wonder if I can these are strategies and actions. So this is meant to be Glenwood Springs roadmap for how we implement our vision and our goals. There is a lot here, and this was really in-depth. It identifies, in the full plan, it identifies who's supposed to be the champion of this strategy and action. So it identifies a board or commission, it identifies a department. So you can look in the full document to see who's meant to be moving that forward. Obviously, this is, this is an incredibly long to-do list, a honey-do list for all of our departments at the city. And so this is not going to be immediate, and we are consistently looking at this to see what did we agree to do? And in what timeline did we agree to do it? There's priorities listed in the full document that indicate something is meant to happen sooner or over a longer course of time. So these, these are also really great for you guys to look through, and they're by topic. So you can say, yellow is transportation and mobility. Right at the top, continue to evaluate and monitor State Highway 82. Right at the top, continue to evaluate and monitor state highway eighty two. Fun, that one's not my department, luckily. My department, uh, one that we look at a lot is housing. Kevin, who was going to be here tonight, this is kind of his, uh, section that he's constantly evaluating. So our policies and actions around housing, and you can look at this also to better inform. You know, the goals are kind of these broad statements, but these are actually how we think, uh, we're going to get at that goal. So increase housing density, scary one, but it's there. And then it, uh, has a couple of supporting strategies of how we might go about that. Encourage accessory dwelling units. Yep, we're doing that almost on a daily basis. So you can look at these to see, and this is also a great guide for you guys. If you see something on this list and you have questions, you know, uh, I didn't actually look, I wanted to look for, um. There's something in here about lighting, which has been a hot topic with you guys. So I wanted to go through here and be like, did we identify anything for lighting?
Yes, you did.
We did. It's in there, right?
Thin land use and future growth, reduce light pollution.
Thank you. Reduce it, that's the goal. What are the strategies, Joy? Are you looking at it?
I love it.
BB guns.
BB guns? Oh my goodness. Now I understand, that's going to be one of those. Beating goals. Reducing light pollution, but maintaining infrastructure. So the, this is really great and I encourage you guys to take the time. These strategies aren't like super hard and long to read through. But they're very informative and they, um, lay out basically what we're supposed to be doing. So if you guys come across some of your projects like lighting has been, and you want to review it, you can tell me, hey Hannah. The comprehensive plan says you're going to do it, so. Let's do it. And then I'll kick a bunch of work back to you to help me actually get it done. Doesn't that sound great? So this is all the different categories and it's very broad reaching, public utilities and services. There's probably a lot in here that you guys might not know is a strategy that the city has kind of agreed to of like, we should look at working towards this. But there's not, I won't commit to any timelines because this is huge and this is all departments. It's not just going to be community development. It's going to be our public works, it's going to be engineering, streets, um, you know, city administration. All of us are kind of have this as a to do list. Parks and Rec is one that I also, they've got quite a long list as well. Any questions on these strategies and actions? And again, just like the goals, when you look at these, some are going to say increase housing density. Which seems to be a lot of times at odds with preserve historic culture. So again, this is a balance, uh, where this community, uh, contains multitudes. As is reflected in their comprehensive plan.
So I guess I, I don't know, question, comments, kind of wrapped all up in there. But I, it was, it was really a fun thing, you know, being involved with this, you know, for me anyway. When, when we went through this and I thought this was really. I thought this was really good, the, the strategies and action items and all of that sort of thing. And it, and you haven't really mentioned, but so this is like every ten years, is that roughly the window of, of revising, having a major. I'll call it overhaul or a really look, look see at the, at the comp plan.
Yes, it gives me heartburn to think about that.
I was gonna say, Hannah's going to be looking for a new job.
It's exciting, but as you guys see. Raise of hands, who was still on commission that worked on? Okay, so we've still got, so you can tell the rest of the commissioners, you know, this was. Planning and zoning commission was the steering committee for the comprehensive plan. And you guys met an additional meeting every month just for comprehensive plan stuff for a year and a half.
For a long time.
So it is a heavy lift, so you guys probably.
And, and, and you hired a consultant. I mean, there, there is a consultant that you brought, I mean, it's, it's a huge.
It's very big.
Huge effort, I mean.
But yes, it is meant to be updated ten to fifteen years. I think this one we did in twenty twenty three and the last one had been in twenty eleven.
I will say it's like very good looking and I feel like, you know, all the information we had was so out there. And you guys synthesized everything so well that hopefully it's a good framework for just.
I think it's a.
Reassessing, it's beautiful, yeah.
And I won't, we won't take credit for the organization, that is the consultants.
Well, they did a good job.
Yeah, they did a really great job with input from staff of how we wanted it to work to make sure that it is. Referenceable and easily used by you guys, but also public. This is the public's document for the city. How much the public uses it, I don't have a grasp on that, but.
And I agree with, um, with Pat, just that this, um, the brief is just a really good useful tool, I think, for us to all refer back to and.
I don't know how many times I'm like, I do not want to go into the two hundred page document. I just need to find the strategy.
But it's, but, but it's the background.
Just print the brief.
And it's good accountability during.
It is good accountability, can we get commissioner comments?
Sorry, I thought that during the process, um, it, there was a mention though, I mean, I know officially updated every ten years. But I remember Jim saying, or maybe it wasn't Jim.
Uh-oh, what did him promise?
I'm sorry, I strike that name. But it was a mention that it would be evaluated like every. Year or even other year or something like that.
Recall that misguided statement.
Okay, okay.
That was on my thing too.
So I.
I was going to say two years.
Yeah, I thought it was every couple of years. It was not like an overhaul, but more or less like, you know, just making sure that it, if there is something that's found that needed to be changed or addressed or pushed forward and stuff like that, so.
And I think, I think that conversation was also around some of these strategies. Staff and department heads are meant to be referencing this document from time to time to make sure. You know, basically what we agreed to do, whether that's still feasible, whether we can take it on now, whether that's a, you know, in a five year sort of thing. To make sure that this is actually a living document and not just something that sits on a shelf and that we're implementing the things that were decided upon.
Okay, and it wasn't Jim.
You know, I want to echo that too, though. I mean, I, I mean, I think that if you want it to be fifteen years or twenty years or whatnot, if it's a living document. And every couple of years, you know, you go through and you go, boy, that was a stupid strategy. Now we've got three others that have really popped up that we've learned about, that, that we need to maybe move in here that have now bubbled above. These other two, and I mean, I don't, I don't think it needs to be like what was done before. But it seems like it'd be something, I'll just kind of throw this out that maybe Boyd would do it that, because it is, it's, it's a city, it's a city document. It's not, it's not just your document. I mean, Jim, you did a great job coming in, leaving PNC to leap right into this, I thought you were good. But, but, um, I mean, I think that that's a, I think that's a good point. Just to make it be a living document, so it doesn't get outdated. You know, in five years and you pull stuff up and it's like. You know, government administrations that I won't mention can pull things up from the seventeen hundreds or, hey, here's what's there and then, and then what you, you know, whatever. Sort of thing, I mean, anyway.
Coming up here.
You have to go.
To the mic.
Community development, we don't want to put it on shelf and leave it alone. We don't want to amend it every single year and it's not just a planning document. I'm helping manage the energy climate action plan, we're working on river corridor master plan. And there are a number of different initiatives and projects within different departments, community groups. That can all use this document, not to prove that they're right, but to lend some credence to the voice from the past. That had spent an amazing amount of time and we didn't just erase the previous comp plan. We used it, we built on it and we put it forward. So when you have something sitting in front of you to consider on, on a particular night. You won't be surprised by this document to say, well, how can we use this? How do we use this? Go through it, get used to it, call me all the time, I'll run you through it, I'll give you an interpretation, I'll give you an idea of what was going on. Inside your heads and the community when it was created. It, it's meant to be used over and over again for a number of different reasons. And keep this in mind, when somebody does bring an application in here that is divisive. And we do have fifty people standing here with their opinions and frustration and rage. You've got that plan that you've looked at, you know it. They'll most likely dig it up too and become very knowledgeable about it to say, hey, this particular plan should be. You know, voted down tonight because it says here in the comp plan. That's not the only thing we're looking at, but it can be used.
Well, I think all the, and I think all the worst thing, or I'll say that I'm saying is that, is it by making it be a living document? That is things evolve and change and that's, that's just how it is where we live. I mean, we continue to grow or we don't want, you know, whatever those are, it just seems like. Maybe it's every three years, I don't know what it is, but it needs, it seems like there needs to be some time. And, and, and it also seems to me that, that, um, I'll speak for myself, I'm, I don't have the vision. That, that, that people that are on staff have. Because that, I mean, you're hearing so many different perspectives on things and as Matt is and Ryan and. You know, all, all these other people that own different parts of it. So, anyway, that's, that, that's my only kind of echo of what Amy brought up on. The living kind of thing, and I know it's, geez, it was a huge amount of work, but you know, once again, it was a great, a great effort, but anyway.
But I agree with you, um, and, and that's why I was excited to bring this back tonight. It's good for me to get up here and remind myself where the, uh, dark sky compliance action strategy actually lives and remind myself that it's actually in there.
Um, I, I find it really valuable to have that in-depth, um, knowledge, having worked on the plan. And not just in this position that planning and zoning, it really helps, um, solidify our understanding of where the community wants to head. And it, it might also serve as a good checklist for the departments and the commissions a few years down the road. Hey, we did that or we're, we're halfway through that, you know, it feels like we're getting somewhere. So yeah, I do appreciate that document.
That's a great point. It, it does allow us to be like, like Jim just mentioned, who's working on the climate action plan, which is identified in the climate plan. Hey, look, I'm doing my job, good for me.
Good for you, Jim, good for you.
Good for you.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question.
Yes.
Um, going to the flume.
Flume.
Yeah. And, and the boogeyman that kind of reared its head. About the city becoming conquistadors and heading up four mile. Excuse me. Can you kind of speak to the force and effect of the urban growth boundary or like the purpose of it? All that good fun stuff.
Great question, and I actually meant to bring that up, so thank you for the reminder. So if you've taken a look at this map, there is the city boundary, which is the dark black line. And then we have, um, the twenty twenty three UGB, it's the urban growth boundary. So that is areas that are adjacent to the city that the city believes and most people agree. There's a lot of impact for things that are going to go into those areas. And so we have a, an agreement with the county. Um, and when they have projects that are proposed in those sections, we are a referring agency, which means. They send the project to us to make comments on. And what's great about it of projects that end up in that pink dotted line of our urban, it's like our sphere of influence, I call it. We have this document that tells us what we've got it at and we make comments based on that. So you'll see most of the properties outside of the city and in the urban growth boundary are marked as low density residential. And it points out here, this was something you guys might remember that was kind of a point of contention, um, on the urban growth boundary. Why is it all low density residential? And so we put kind of something there, this little, I don't know if you can see it. This little call out that talks about, I'll just read it to you, the land within the urban growth boundary from this point, this is south. To your four mile comment. From this point, south is based on parcel lines and not water service area, that's also something that I can speak to in a moment. Low density residential uses are designated in this area until annexation to the city is complete. And a planned unit development or other development review is approved. So view that as a little bit of a placeholder. It's outside the city, so it's not seen as more of the urban compact development. Low density residential is listed as a placeholder until. If at all, that property decides to annex into the city. And obviously we've had some changes in circumstances around annexation. When you talk about being a living document, that's one of the major ones that had an impact with our recent charter changes around annexation. So a lot of people, there's also a line here that's referred to as the blue line. And that was historically where we would be able to serve water. And that was a elevation component of being able to get water up into that, um, to those neighborhoods. So that's also represented on the plan. Did I answer your question or did I just go off on a tangent of mine?
Good, oh, that was great, thank you. And if I may also kind of, kind of move that into the, uh, Jim, you mentioned the, the master river corridor plan. Is it similar kind of visioning occurring there and, and also working with BLM for service? Intergovernmental exchange, agency exchange about what kind of visioning exercise that could be? Or is that a kind of parochial exercise?
You know, that's, that's a good expectation to have as we move into it. We haven't issued the RFP yet, uh, for those to bid on it to then work through the, the year long process. Of identifying what the community wants, what, uh, the administration, all of us, when I say administration, not just the city administrator, but what we all. Want and need, uh, from a lot of different perspectives. So there will be outreach, uh, for this, it's, it's a, a full municipal, uh, examination, working with the citizens.
Cool, great, thank you.
If I could add on to the, to the flume conversation, take a look at our citizen, uh, map viewer. That has this layer on it that you can adjust and zoom in and also use with other different layers. It gets kind of crazy when you overlap it with a zoning, so you, but you can toggle them on and off and look at certain areas. Especially before you hear something here on a particular evening, take a, a, a look at what you see. And especially if you've got some time ahead of a, a meeting where you are going to, going to make a decision. Look at, at that map, look at the different layers and, and ask yourself different questions where you may not have an answer. Give us a call and we can give you some feedback before the meeting.
Cool.
So we're not supposed to do that.
You can contact staff with questions. The protocol for that is that if Commissioner White, uh, asks me questions, I usually won't answer you right away. And it's something that I will answer in this meeting so that you all have the same information at the same time. And that's what I do with council as well. You can pose questions to me ahead of the meeting so that staff can prepare. We just won't respond to you with your answers until the meeting.
And also trying to this lead, I, I meant like if you don't understand how the fuel works or.
Then call Jim, always call Jim. Does everyone know where that map lives for your own?
Can you put that map in an easier to find place on the city website?
Well, I guess I didn't know that it was.
Because nothing's that easy to find.
It's not easy to. Is it the zoning map and then you just click the appropriate boxes to add all those layers or is it?
So the way I like to get there, let me see if I can share.
Yeah. Why don't you, let's, let, let's put Commissioner White on.
Okay.
Make, make Commissioner White green.
And I'm not sure if I can ask this specific question, but, um, the, the Bell Rippey parcel is kind of identified for conservation. And I know that there's like some overlapping, like some of it's private, some of it's city and then.
Up the hill?
Yeah, is there any, can you talk about any sort of?
I mean, I don't know that there's anything.
Progress on that, no?
Uh, no, I, not that.
Nobody wants it, I know that.
I don't know that there's, I mean, that is, that's like a three drink conversation.
And then we still won't have answers, we'll just be laughing.
Have answers, but we will get through the history now, it's, that parcel has a, a long history. So I don't know, there's not.
No progress, no progress, okay.
Can I, yeah, just to kind of stay on that, that, um, sphere of influence track. Um, and really kind of relational side of it, so the other side of that coin. So the engagement with the county or adjacent landowners where that boundary, that are within that boundary, but not in a municipal boundary. Is there deference to, are they doing a lucky loop at what the city's doing as far as its policies and, and projections? Or what's that dialogue like?
So, um, the county, like I mentioned, we get referrals for projects happening there and actually, uh, three miles out from our boundary. So I've got a couple, um, planned unit developments that I'm reviewing right now as the county has requested that are on highway eighty two in between us and Carbondale. But the ones within that urban growth boundary, um, the county does place that as a little bit more deference to comments coming from the city. So we'll make comments based on our comprehensive plan and what the comprehensive plan outlines. That we want for those areas that are going to have an immediate impact on the city. Whereas ones that are further out eighty two, you know, we still make comments on, but. You know, ultimately, ultimately the county has jurisdiction on approval of projects in that area. But we make comments, they review our comments. And we have a good. And we have a good relationship of those comments. You know, it's, it's interesting because they're in the intergovernmental agreement, which I'm sure Carl knows actually a lot better than I do, maybe. No. Okay. So we're both on the same. But so they, they do, they place importance on what we say in that. But ultimately it is not our jurisdiction to approve. So I don't want to make you think that I'm making comments based on our comprehensive plan that the board of county commissioners is going to be like, well, Hannah and the Glenwood Springs comprehensive plan says, you know, that might not be ideal. They are the jurisdiction, just like, you know, we are the jurisdiction for our boundaries. But they take into account what we say and they take into account, because it's written in the IGA, what our comprehensive plan has designated for those areas.
Great. Thank you.
It's not, it's not a perfect process, but we do get to have some influence in, in those areas particularly.
Okay. I think Commissioner Guyman.
I had a question about the flume as well. I'd asked this question a few meetings ago, I guess. And I didn't really quite understand. When it says like low density and what are some of the other?
We've got.
Single, family, residential, like mixed use. Is that what it is currently or is that the goal?
So this is future land use map. So if I pulled up the zoning map side by side, the zoning map is actually these districts zone and the regulatory pieces to implement the goal of the, of these categories. So it's not what it is currently because these aren't, these aren't zone districts that you see that we utilize on our zone district map, which I can, I'm happy to pull up as well.
Is, is the zone district current map? Is that the goal or is that what it is currently?
That's what it is currently. And for the most part, though, we make updates to that map as well. They, you should see a reflection of compatibility, but not everywhere. And so when someone comes in to propose something or comes in with a rezoning, that is an adorable poodle.
Squirrel.
Squirrel.
There is a squirrel on the street.
When someone. And I'm back. When someone comes in with the rezoning, say they want to move from residential to commercial. These are really the moments where you're going to look at the future land use map and be like, but the future land use map envisions that as residential as well, meaning the current zoning in our zoning map is residential. And the future land use map sees that as maintaining residential. So we'd be like, that would be an argument where we would say, we don't necessarily support this rezoning because it's currently residential and the future land use map also designates it as residential. So moving to commercial doesn't uphold that vision.
So we should look at the current and then we should look at the flume and we should see if it's at least going in that direction.
And that's where you were going, right? You were going to show.
Yes. So let me, let me take a moment to show you guys how I get to, everyone's got a different way of clicks to get there. So I'm taking you to the city of Glenwood Springs homepage here in just a moment. I use the how do I button probably more than anything else. How do I? And then it's got a bunch of things. How do I apply for? How do I contact? How do I find? How do I pay? How do I view? And you can view agendas and minutes and then along this list, city maps. That's always how I get here. And then right at the top, public interactive map viewer is what Jim is talking about. So you open up this map.
Right. You type in zoning map and it doesn't, this is public interactive map, not zoning.
It has the zoning on it.
I know.
So that's what we are using. So that's probably the easiest, simplest way to get to the map that has all of the layers. And then some, so you can see, you might not be able to read this on the side, but ongoing city projects is also on this layer. So you can click these on and off bike racks. Look at that. General Improvement District and then Garfield County Parcels, you click this on and then you'll have Garfield County parcel data that you can click on and it'll come up with the legal description and the owner acreage and all of those fun things. And. Let's see. So we've got the urban growth boundary. You can place that on as well. Downtown overlay district, so many things, zone district boundaries. That's where the zoning map then turns on and you get all the pretty colors. This, to answer your question, this is the current zoning that will tell you if I click on this one.
So if one were to buy a house in a residential zoning area. That may not be a residential zoning area in 20 years, depending on.
I mean, that's.
What happens with.
I think that's possible for any, any spot of land in 20 years. A lot of things can change, but it, you know, it's not a bad idea if you're a homeowner to check what it said, what it says on the future land use map. What is the city envision this? You might be in one of those kind of transitional neighborhoods where on our future land use map, it actually has it as commercial with a focus. But that's not saying that the city is going to turn it into commercial without, you know, due process and a lot of conversations. I would say most of our rezoning is actually applicant initiated. When they want to do something on a piece of property and they look at their current zoning and realize that they can't. That's when they're going to come to Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council with an application to make the argument that it's more appropriate. And in best of cases, the future land use map supports the change that they're requesting. Which is an easier path for applicants than if they're coming and, and proposing to rezone it to something that the future land use map doesn't support. Then you're going to have to be pretty good with your arguments to say why this living document might need some updating. And we have updated the future land use map previously. So this has a ton of information that's, that's open to the public. And you can click all the things on. I'm looking for the flood. I'm not sure. Surface management, fire districts, recycling zones. You guys know what recycling zones you're in?
No.
Now you do.
I do. I'm doing some of it and I don't like it.
Yeah, no, it's my favorite thing.
Now you do. If I ask that question next month, I, I want to. And then the future land use is down here at the bottom. So I think, let's try and click on both. I think it'll be very confusing. Or it might not even do it. You might not be able to see it. So I'm going to click that off. So it was underneath. So this is what the flume looks like, which is very different than the zone district boundary, but they have a lot of similarities is what I'm going to say. Because we've been, you know, we've had the flume, it doesn't make major changes. Like throughout, you know, we did an update and there were some boundaries that shifted a little bit on the flume, but nothing really big. Like we didn't take whole neighborhoods and just be like, yes, commercial. So that has been kind of consistent and over the years, they kind of, they line up closer to each other. Any other questions about this map or how you get there, how you use it, all the beautiful information that you can find here, which is great for you guys to utilize as P and Z.
It is a great map.
No, this, this is great, Hannah.
And also, you know, fun things like city-owned properties is on here as well. If you click these off, all the city-owned properties is going to be this kind of pink overlay. You guys might not have known. How fun.
You have fun.
Isn't planning fun? I know you believe that, like I do, because you're here. I do want to offer up an opportunity for Patrick and Martyr who don't have mics. If you guys have questions. All good? He's like, I know all this stuff. Excellent. Yes, that's right. Your, your background lends itself to using this map. Okay. So that I've basically done the presentation that I was going to on the comprehensive plan. This is great that you guys have had questions and led to other areas. Anything else that you want to talk about on the comprehensive plan? Or questions that you have on the document? For myself or Carl or Jim? Are you coming away with a better understanding or?
And I think Commissioner White.
A deeper understanding?
I mean, I guess what pops into mind, and I think I already know the answer, but I'm just bringing it up because we are warned as a commission to not come into an application file with a perspective on how we're going to weigh in, right? We're, we're to come in with kind of an open perspective on the application. And so in doing our research on the comprehensive plan, you're urging us then to research how the application actually supports comprehensive plan as well as maybe does not. While we're reviewing this at home and weighing in.
I think that's a great way to put it. Also, I think it's a great way to organize your own thoughts and match them up with what the community had input on. To make sure that you're in, in line with what the community wanted and be able to, you know, point to your feelings that you're having. We all have feelings on applications and ground it in something that has reached a consensus and been adopted. So that you're speaking from a point of, you know, informed, informed feelings is what we're going to call that. And then just also, I want you to be very, I want you guys to be very familiar with this document. And, oh, thanks, Jim. So that you're comfortable making those arguments and, and backing them up with what the community has decided.
And I do appreciate that you guys put in the staff report examples on how, and I don't know if everybody does that, but in a scenario where we would maybe cite a denial, there's examples on why maybe those things don't.
Alternative motion.
Yeah.
And that came out in.
Pretty new.
Pandemic. That was something that someone wanted and we found it to be useful because, you know, staff is going to bring recommendations to you based on our current code, the current zoning regulations. We understand that there will be feelings. And we want to allow you a clear path to state whether you disagree with us or not. Because we're not going to take it personally. If you do, that's just part of the job. But we tell you what our recommendation is based on, you know, these parameters and these documents, and then you guys get to come up here. And in a lot of cases, you as Planning and Zoning Commission, like with a special use permit, have more authority to get into the appropriateness than staff does. We're, we're held to certain documents that we give you recommendations on. And then you guys on a lot of applications, but not all, as Carl has pointed out, get to have a little bit more scrutiny on the appropriateness of what's coming before you.
Commissioner Guyman.
I mean, it's just because I'm new, right? But it feels odd to me that part of the staff report talks about if it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. It feels fluffy, right? Just because we said.
Understand that.
Things can be like consistent and then not consistent at the exact same time.
Absolutely.
And so like you're reading it and you're like, oh, it does say it's consistent, but then I can look at the comprehensive plan and find lots of ways that it's not consistent. And I think that as a diverse group, just like our community is really diverse, we're just going to always find things in the comprehensive plan that meet more of what, like, personal.
Echo chamber?
I don't want to say opinions, but like how, how we view Glenwood Springs.
Well, and so, yes, I, I appreciate you pointing that out and it's a conversation that I've had with staff. And that's really one of the reasons why I wanted to have this conversation with you guys. Because you are going to find opportunities where you feel a certain way and you could find five points of the comprehensive plan that support you feeling that certain way. And what I'm asking and kind of going over tonight for you guys to take a little bit more care and also on the staff side is that you recognize and accept that you are going to prioritize one goal over another and say it, the balance, right? I recognize that a double-decker bridge can accommodate a lot more traffic through Glenwood. But I think it's not going to support the goals of vibrancy and downtown character. And I prioritize that goal in this instance. So what I'm hoping for you guys, when you're using this document, don't use it as something where it's like, I have a feeling and so I'm only going to point to the parts of the code that support that feeling. Embrace all of it and just kind of, and, and state that. And I think that's honest and it's transparent. And we all know that about the document in front of us. It is, it's a contradiction of goals at times. Did I not answer the questions?
I don't know. I just.
It is, it is fluffy because it's.
In the staff report, it could also point out.
And that's what I've had discussions with my staff to make sure that that is occurring. So if you have felt that that has not been occurring, that's something that we are working towards.
But I don't mind fluffy. I like.
Something's got to be fluffy.
I would also say that that's part of our job. So what we do, I mean, you know how the process works, but it's like someone makes a motion and that's the initial motion. And then we have the right as our subjective commissioners to come in and say, well, I feel like that doesn't support the comprehensive plan, even though you voted to approve this. And then it almost is like you are charged by saying that to present the case to all of us and kind of, kind of shed light on why your argument is that it doesn't support the comprehensive plan, which then gives us the opportunity to maybe see what you're presenting.
I think also that's a great comment, Commissioner White, and a great comment that you were mentioning. So there's also a fundamental difference of what staff is doing versus what you guys are doing on the dais. And like I mentioned, we are within stricter boundaries on most applications. If there, and Carl has mentioned, there are some applications, it will check all the boxes in code. Staff is going to include comprehensive plan goals that are supported in that case. You don't have a lot of wiggle room in that case. So you could make, as pointed out, a lot of arguments that you think the comprehensive plan doesn't support it. But if it checks every single box of our municipal code, you're a little bit limited. So that's where staff, we're always limited in what we can actually put forward to you. You guys have, then you're, you guys are the next line of defense. You get a little bit more leeway and flexibility in what you can apply, depending on the application. And so like Joy just mentioned, you might be able to say, well, then I actually disagree here because of these reasons that, that might not have been highlighted in the staff report because this is something that checks all the boxes. It is supported by the comprehensive plan in these ways. And here you guys go.
I get, I guess one question I would just kind of have as we move into this rat hole here a little bit on this one, but I think it's good is, is that, you know, I, I've spent a year and a half working on the comp plan. We did this and it's, and it's very, very involved. 200 pages to the, to the short version or whatever, you know, kind of thing. And, and what's difficult, you know, you get a packet, you're on, you're on P and Z, you get a packet, it's a thousand pages, whatever sort of thing. You know, you kind of work through it and the best you can. And, you know, I think we do a good job. But, but, but as you go through the comp plan, then, you know, we're, we don't, you know, we, we don't have, have that knowledge for all of that unless we kind of go through it and we're, you know, layman people doing that. And I think, and I don't know if this makes any, any sense or whatnot, but, but you know, let's say that, that Commissioner Guyman or me or whomever says, well, you know, it, it, it seems like maybe that doesn't support something and, but we don't know. Here's, that's, you know, strategy 4.3 of this and these things. And to, to be able to go through and say, here's what that is so that, so you could move for a denial kind of thing. I mean, I'm just, it, it's, it's extremely complicated. It's, it's fraught with complexity to, to go through and to, and to do that sort of thing. I mean, you know what I'm saying? And I don't know. And I, I guess I'm kind of putting it out there that maybe, maybe you guys as the, as the bogwans of the, of the comp plan or the knowledge people of, of here's what it is, but is to help us. And maybe even that's different than what was in your, was in your report that you presented of a certain thing and says, well, yeah, that is in blah, 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 because it is, you know, just like you were pointing out, there's, there's, you know, conflicting kind of things. And, and what is your subjectivity of how you're looking at this? It's, the comp plan's not a lot, it's not a straightforward thing. So I think, I think that's where it's, it's complicated.
Fluffy.
Well, fluffy, but I mean, I, I think it's not fluffy. I think it's, it's a great, it's a great document. But, but it, it just says how difficult it is to talk about our community and where we're going in the future. It's a complicated thing. So where you're sitting, it could be.
And I don't think it's derogatory to call it fluffy. It is. It's got a lot of the feelings. It's vision and goals. It's visionary. It's not always going to agree with itself. So it's meant to be complex, comprehensive, the whole picture. Yeah.
But I think I'm wondering if I'm hearing what Pat is saying is.
Pete, sorry.
Oh, my. His son is, I keep calling him his son. I mean, I called Pat twice tonight. But I'm, I'm wondering if I'm hearing that. But I'm I'm wondering if I'm hearing that that it from both of you that maybe you would like to see in an application, maybe just a small list of the comprehensive goals that may be in conflict through the application somewhere. Like strategies or whatever, just list of lighting.
Heard, and we've been having conversations with that among staff. So where we are able, I think that's certainly something that can be.
Right. Or if it's something that is, like you mentioned, where we actually have more weight to weigh in, like a special use permit or something like that.
Yeah.
Where it makes sense.
That's like big for all of you guys is those ones. And if you need staff to kind of point out, like you have more flexibility in application, those are the ones where you can lean in on this, on this larger document to make your arguments.
But we can use, from what I understand and what I've read is that you can use the comprehensive plan to deny something as long as you can explain why the comprehensive plan is goes against the comprehensive plan. And when I brought this up at another meeting, I was told, well, that's not really the that's not the code, that's the, it's just a plan, which I get, but it just feels a little on both sides, because then you can actually use the comprehensive plan to deny then an applicant or whatever is coming up if it's against the comprehensive plan. Yeah.
Not exactly.
Yeah, I mean, you can, what you can use it for is to help support the position, but your denial has to be based in the code as well. So we would have to be discussing, say, a a particular element, maybe a design element. Maybe the the building is, you know, asking for a variance to 45 feet from 35 feet, and you could look to the comprehensive plan about maintaining, you know, the visual. You know, I'm struggling here. Help me out, Hannah. You know, some visual aspect of of the community in that neighborhood. That's where the comp plan can help with those findings as to why it doesn't meet the requirements of the code when you look to the comprehensive plan. Standing alone, you can't just say the comp plan says we're supposed to maintain, you know, this small town feel. So I don't believe that any housing is appropriate because the comp plan says that we shouldn't change at all. Right? Like, that's where the comp plan doesn't really get you there. So if we're talking about a specific criteria in the code, the comp plan can help with your argument whether that specific provision is being met or not being met. But it doesn't just stand out there on its own as a basis to say the comp plan says, we don't do housing anymore because it ruins the character of town and we're done. That's that's not the end of the conversation. It has to be anchored in a code provision or criteria. And the comp plan adds that colored commentary to the why it doesn't meet that component.
Well, it meets everything. If it meets all the codes, then why do we have to talk about it?
Good question.
That is why you'll hear me say that sometimes, that the decision in front of you, you will occasionally hear me say, Hannah does it more nicely than I do, that this is really a ministerial decision. Right? It hits, it checked all the boxes, it meets all the requirements. It may be ugly as all get out, but there's not a lot we can do about that. Right?
Unless it's against the comprehensive plan.
No, not if it checks all the boxes of the criteria in the code.
It's involved in that, doesn't it?
We can discuss it. I mean, you can.
I think if I if I may.
Yes, you may.
I understand where you're coming from, Commissioner Guyman. Is it Guyman or Geyman? It's Guyman. Excellent. That happens, and I understand how that can seem, you know, like a waste of your time or that it's not important. But a lot of times our municipal code is also a living document. And so what we experience, and this is, you know, in some of your guys' times, when before we changed our development code, we were seeing eight, nine variances per application. That told us something. That told us that our development code is not working. Obviously, people were going outside of what we have written because things weren't lining up. And so we did a major overhaul of our development code. Smaller changes we come across, and it happens here at P and Z when you guys are uncomfortable. And it also happens at city council, when you guys are kind of in this box where it checks all the boxes and you can't necessarily deny it because the findings aren't there. That's when conversations happen of, is this really what we want? You guys start those conversations, city council starts those conversations, staff has those conversations. When we witness kind of a trend of things going on. And that's how things change. So it might not feel, it might not feel great that you've got some one of those things on the bowling lanes, you know,
Guardrails.
That you've got guardrails. It might not feel great, but it can lead to change. And I think that's really important. So sorry if it feels uncomfortable. You can obviously mention that in your deliberations. And then we can have conversations about if this, if this is happening over and over and everyone's feeling uncomfortable, then it's, hey, staff, we probably need to look at this and see that it still aligns with our goals and our visions and that it's operating. That's the only thing. I'm trying to, you know, soften the blow a little bit of, you know, there are those parameters, but it's still important conversations to have and go through the process that's outlined in our code.
I would like to add that I think it's critical for all of us to, all of us on this commission to have a good understanding of the entire comprehensive plan, not just the brief. Because that helps us to understand the reasons why the code is written as it is. And then helps us, you know, enrich our conversations about, you know, why is the code like this? What are these applicants asking for? And how is our decision going to move the community towards the future that we have collectively decided on? It is a really important guiding document. But I mean, if you consider it sort of like a, you know, like the Bible or something, you'll find contradicting things in there too. Yet people still have a lot of respect for it and will refer to it. But you can find components of the book that will fight against itself. So.
I think where you guys have a lot of power and don't ask me where in the action strategies it is, but you guys can find it. Is something that states, we're meant to review municipal code to make sure that it lines up with that document. That was a two and a half year process that we came to the end of it. And we've been implementing some of those strategies. But one of those strategies is make sure you're looking at your municipal code, your regulatory parameters to make sure it is supported. So if you come across the applications and you really don't think it is, that's a conversation to start that you guys have in this position. You've got some power to be that voice.
Great bedtime reading.
You know, you know, so so Hannah, a question I have, like, like I think Joy asked of asking a question sort of thing. So let's say, as as we go through the document, and you know, it takes a lot of time just going through the staff report, you know, that that takes a lot of time. And then one thing, you look at the staff report and there's the code, fine, there's all of that sort of thing. And then there's, how does it support the comp plan? There's, you know, it goes through all of the, so it's 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 very involved as we go through. And and I guess, does it? I mean, should we, if we have questions beforehand, just, you know, queue you up and throw them there and go, hey, you know, I I and, you know, we, we, we get a lot of that deliberation when we're sitting here. But I think as you go through it, and even if it's that day, you know, we 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 throw it at you guys and then you kind of know. And and maybe you can help us understand here's how that does align with the how the comp plan supports it. Or it doesn't really matter because it's all, this is, you know, an ugly project, but code supports it, as Carl says. So there you go. You have, you're, I don't want to say stuck, but but that's how, that's kind of how that is. Versus, yeah, there, there is some leeway, there's some flexibility, because it's not, you know, it's not just a black and white sort of thing. And which most of them, they're a little wooly, you know, they're a little fuzzy of how they go. But it it's, it's, it's complicated to to have the knowledge of the whole comp plan, which is huge to be able to have that conversation other than saying, you know, this doesn't feel right to me or that sort of thing when we're, when we're sitting here doing our deliberations. I, I mean, it's, I don't know if that makes sense, but it's.
Yeah, definitely. I welcome those conversations. It it kind, it gives me a temperature gauge of where you guys are at on your arguments. And then to the questions, like, yes. Usually we receive, I would say, city council probably does this a little bit more than planning and zoning commission. But this is a great conversation that we're having now. If you've ever felt like you wanted to ask a question before the application, like I said, we'll receive it. It helps us prepare so that we're better able to answer your question. Because sometimes we're up here and we're like, dang it, that's in that document that's upstairs and I can't get it right now. So it's a mechanism to help us prepare to answer your question. But we won't answer it until we've got you all together and then we will address it so that you all have the same information and that you're not really able to arrive at a decision before you guys take your seats.
I just wanted to make the the comment to Commissioner Guyman, you you stated then why are we seeing these applications when they meet all the code? I will say as like being a part of this process is oftentimes frustrating because you have an entire community who's maybe upset at a certain development. You know, the big, I'm not going to talk about any specific ones, but but large developments, right? And you are sitting here, a part of the process, a part of the approval. And you feel like your your hands are tied because, again, it meets all the code. And there's really nothing you can do about it. That's just a comment. It's, you know, it is challenging because you would like to refer to some other glorious comprehensive plan to say, no, deny.
Because we did.
Well, we did.
Well, I mean, I would say what's really significant, or sorry, Commissioner.
It's okay.
And just here, and and I think you said this to me once, is really just how important the discussion is, even after emotion. And I think sometimes that, you know, questions come up during those discussions that I think are really great. And, you know, and then we're asking during the presentation about like, okay, how does this meet the comprehensive plan? And then sometimes if it seems even just obvious, I remember Chair Waller saying to me, just ask the que, just state it anyway, even though it seems so obvious. Because, you know, that's helping you work it out, I think, in your mind when we're coming to some of these decisions. And I think, you know, especially, you know, it just, it might seem fluffy and all this kind of stuff, but really, it helps you work it out. And because that's how I kind of felt in the beginning too, you know, like, oh, my gosh, like, this just seems like so against what I want to think is okay, or what the direction of this, you know, approval process is. So.
Well, I think part of our, part of our job is to inform the public of maybe some of the knowledge that we have. So asking even rhetorical questions.
Correct.
You are kind of just stay asking the questions so that then it goes on public
Public record.
Public record and people know about it.
Yeah, like she's like before she'll say something like, oh, well, this, this property, even though we were already told it or it's in the package, you know, you might ask, oh, well, is this property conforming? Or something, even though we all know it is. And then somebody will respond, oh, yeah, well, actually, that's from the plat map from 1862 or something. So it just definitely helps inform everyone. So.
Well, and 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 I guess one thing I'll kind of point out too, and you know, there have been large projects that have come in here that have been recommended for approval that we denied. And and we, we went by the denial process and went through the whole thing. And maybe the applicant went forward then to to counsel and whatnot. And and they were, they they were loaded with all of our stuff that we denied, maybe a list of 15 items or whatever it was. And and so, so I think it's not, even though it can come in and it might be presented, kind of like Hannah said, that staff is recommending approval and whatnot, but by our conversation and whatnot that we go through, we may not approve that. And, you know, might end up eventually getting approved or not approved or whatever it leads to. That one would have led to something pretty interesting, but it but it was, but I think that's why we go through the process. And I think, you know, the process is, you know, if it's greater than four, is that, is that the number? Is that greater than four units? It's a less than four or less, it's it's an administrative and then so I mean, but but anyway, I mean, I think I think that we definitely add value to 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 the whole process of here's how it goes.
And what I would tell you is that the you guys do so many more repetitions of applications compared to the city council. And they rely heavily on what you do and what your recommendation is and the concerns that you voice. And you got to remember that there are three members of the council, even after the changeover, that used to sit on the planning commission. So they know the work you do. They have a lot of respect for it and they listen to it. And, you know, like, pretty much every application I can think of in the last year and a half, what you guys said mattered more than what anybody else said in the room, frankly, with those guys. So.
Can I? Commissioner Waller said, so I guess I'm confused that if it it meets all the criteria and it checks all the boxes, can we still vote no?
You can. I mean, it's going to be hard to defend, right? Like, I can't tell you how you have to vote. I can tell you it is hard to defend. And when you're in that situation, if you're trying to find a way to say no, sometimes a continuance is a good idea because it gives staff some time to hear what you're looking at or you're concerned about to find that.
Well, I think what what I'll just speak about, the one time I was talking about was there are other findings that that we ascertain that we thought were valid, that were brought up. And so we brought those up and that was what was on our denial.
Is that the one out here on Grand Avenue?
There was one over, over on that part of town.
Part of town, right, yeah.
But but it was kind of a, kind of a big one. And it was but anyway, I mean, it was, it was a big conversation. I think, I think Carolyn was the one that that kind of put forth here's all of the points, but but I thought it was, we we followed the process. And and so, so I think from my perspective, and this is just my perspective is that a lot of it is subjective and and staff is, you know, extremely professional, does a great job of pulling it together. And our job is to to, from a layman perspective, ascertain how do we view some of that data? And we might pull some other things in that that can, that can lead to 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 a different outcome. And 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 that doesn't mean that that's, that that's what ends up happening.
Yeah. And and there are going to be times when you guys are going to interpret a section of the code differently. You know, what is, I don't know, what is a doorway, you know, a street facing doorway? Is that on the corner of the building or is that in the middle of the building? Right? There can be things like that that.
Or is fire an issue? Or is there's, there's, yeah, there's a lot of things.
There's a, there's a lot of nuances there. And so the application that checks all the boxes every time is actually pretty rare. I mean, usually you you see only a couple of those. You will see them most often with fairly sophisticated, smart developers that understand that they need to stay inside the lane to have the only chance of success. I think the, I think we're past the appeal period for the Cal and Drive project.
Yes.
The, that's a great example of a neighborhood that was very opposed to, you know, that we had a developer do a good job figuring that one out, staying inside the lines. It's very difficult to say no to, because it hit all the notes exactly right.
I think also it's important, you know, we've got the comprehensive plan, which is visionary and meant to be a guide. That's not to mean that our municipal code also isn't important. This is a document that has gone through rigorous public engagement as well. And it has its own importance. So even if you don't necessarily agree with it, it is a community approved document as well. And I think having both of those documents, one that is regulatory and what is on the ground now, and one that is visionary creates a whole picture and also stands a little bit up to you know, whims and trends that can come that aren't long term. There can be things that happen in a community that are short term ideas or beliefs, or you have one person that is very outspoken or against something. And your regulatory document that has been vetted and approved by you guys, every time we bring a change, you review the change, city council reviews the change, the public has a opportunity to comment. So that is, that is a document that has also gone through a process. And when something comes in that meets every aspect of code, you might not agree with it, but that is currently what is agreed upon by all of us that we're operating under. So then it's a conversation of if you don't agree with it, let's have the conversation of why. And if there's four of you up there that are the same, you know, that tells me, okay, this isn't just a one off. Maybe we need to review this to make sure that it's actually in line more. I welcome those conversations. I have probably changed code more times than most planners that I have met combined in my entire career. So I'm open to it. I'm open to the discussion. I think these are living documents and they need to be updated at times, but it needs to be something that is important and that you guys, as Planning and Zoning Commission, you're not elected, but And that you guys, as Planning and Zoning Commission, you're not elected, but you're, you know, you do really great work. You need to be able to reach consensus so that it's not just one of you that's upset with something or two of you. It needs to be this conversation that comes out naturally when something doesn't feel right. So that's, that's all I'm gonna say about how you guys go about this. If it doesn't feel great, voice why it does not feel great and let's have that conversation. And I think you guys could talk about the comprehensive plan until the cows come home, so I'm going to change the topic.
I think we.
Is there any more pertinent questions on this document?
There's gonna be a quiz next time.
Yeah.
What's that?
Quiz.
A quiz.
Yeah, I'll be going. You guys have a chance to win.
We could do jeopardy.
Guys, you guys already have enough homework of what you read, so I, I appreciate you taking the time um, to familiarize yourself with the entire comprehensive plan. Cause it's important, just like all the other things. So if I may, I will move on to our kind of final update that we wanted to give you tonight, just so that. I, I want the Planning and Zoning Commission to be as informed of what's going on in the city as possible. So you guys can go out there in the community um, and talk about all the great things and then ask questions. So our Workforce Housing Advisory Board um, is one of our newer boards and commissions. That is in charge of implementing our affordable housing fund that was passed by the taxpayers in twenty twenty-two. And started generating income in twenty twenty-three. I am going to share my screen so I can show you the information so I don't forget. This is here. Um, so the website that I'm on right now is again, City of Glenwood Springs and this is Housing Stability. So if you go C O G S dot U S backslash housing, this is where you will land. Um, Kevin has done an amazing job of updating this website with all of the programs that our new funding source allows us to do. And that I kind of want to make sure that you guys are aware of. Uh, first and foremost, we have an upcoming event on Thursday of this week. It's opening the toolbox, a housing solutions symposium. Uh, community development staff is going to be at Mortgage Commons from five thirty to seven thirty P M. Talking about all these programs and I'm going to do a quick elevator speech with you. And trying to match up people with opportunities that they might not be aware um, in their housing search. Um, so that's homeowners, that's renters, that's businesses as well. Cause as you guys know, everyone is involved in this conversation. Um, so that's gonna be a great event, light refreshments will be provided. Um, and there will be a panel um, including representatives from Colorado Housing and Finance Authority, CHAFA. They're the ones that implement low income housing tax credit projects. And also um, West Mountain Regional Housing Coalition um, will also be on the panel talking about some of their projects. So this is really meant to be, you know, we're constantly asked, like, we need that one place to go to, to get all the information. We've designed this website and now we're actually holding something so that we get some feedback and we can connect people with resources. And there'll be a bunch of other table resources there as well, on the financing side. And we also have some really great new businesses aimed at financial education that will be helpful. So tell anyone who's looking for a home, is looking to get out of their current home. Uh, doesn't have employees because they don't have housing, all of those, this Thursday, five thirty, seven thirty at Mortgage Comments.
Recording.
I am not certain, good question.
That would be great.
I'll see what we can do about that. Um, and so that's a Thursday event. And then I just want to show you guys, if you haven't been on this website. Um, we set this up to try and get at that informational source for what we're doing, but also our external partners that are working on things. You can see here, you can click on, I'm a renter, I hope to buy, I'm a business, also about. Um, and this will take you to a variety of programs that fall under those different categories. So uh, we're under, I'm a renter right now. You see here, we've got city administered programs, the one that we most recently rolled out is our employer based rental assistance pilot program, which is active right now. That is the City of Glenwood Springs partnering with employers to both fund at fifty percent money to help subsidize their employees. That are renting and spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing. Um, so that just launched, it's pretty exciting, um, it's meant to last for a year. Uh, we had eleven businesses sign up, so eleven businesses voluntarily said, yes, I will fund half of this if you fund the other half. Which is a pretty amazing partnership um, that we've seen. I wasn't quite sure how that was gonna roll out and pleasantly surprised that eleven. Large and small businesses signed up to do that. Uh, and then we also have deed restricted rentals. So you guys are aware when we approve projects, um, if they're over a certain threshold, they have to have a certain amount of affordable housing per our inclusionary zoning standards. So we wanted to make sure people know where those projects are. Um, they might not, they might have waiting lists, but at least they can inquire to see if they're eligible. If there are any units in the affordability that are open and, and where those units are. So um, there's a lot of information here. Um, and then we list a bunch of other resources, um, like Colorado Housing and Finance Authority. Also our Garfield County Housing Authority that does vouchers and things of that nature. Um, I hope to buy, so these programs that we're rolling out, they're going to be adding on. Under the I hope to buy, we are just rolling out our own down payment assistance program. Um, and they'll be talking about that on Thursday quite a bit. And so um, purchasing within City of Glenwood Springs, we have a fund to help you with your down payment assistance within certain parameters, which is great. Um, and then we also have partnering organizations here. Um, and these are ones that are helping homeowners, um, home purchasing. Habitat for Humanity, we list their L three lofts, phase three condominium conversion, which is coming online now. The city helps support that with uh, two C funding as well as general fund. Uh, West Mountain Regional Housing Coalition and their Good Deeds Program, um, doing some pretty amazing things there. And then some other um, down payment closing cost assistance resources. So what I wanted to kind of make you guys aware of is um, the Affordable Housing Fund that was passed by the voters. Has been kind of an amazing tool for the City of Glenwood Springs to actually get some creative programs going. Um, you know, working without any funding in the housing realm is very challenging. And you only really have the regulatory stick at your disposal. So it's been uplifting, if I may say so, to be able to roll out some programs with some actual financial assistance behind them. To help our community find housing, keep housing, keep employees and, and all the other things. So if you guys have any questions about that, Kevin is our Housing Development Manager. He is our staff liaison to the Workforce Housing Advisory Board. Um, and constantly coming up with ideas for new programs with that, with that board. Any questions on what that kind of craziness is about?
Maybe there could be a button that says, I own a home and want to create an E D U.
Yes, and this has been mentioned, great point out. Someone else actually kind of reviewed it and we're like, well, what about those of us that already own a home? Um, that, that's a, that's a great one. Uh, let me see, I don't know if we've got that up there yet, but. Um, wonderful suggestion. We do have some A D U changes also coming out in conjunction with our Housing Commission. If you didn't know, there's two commissions that deal with housing, because it's that important.
Yeah. Yeah, that, I think that would be helpful and obviously most of it will go towards the building, you know, building department and code. But a basic overview of like, can I even do this, you know, attic, basement, garage, whatever, yeah, that might be.
Great idea.
Good way, thanks.
Um, Commissioner Callen. Thank you Hannah, yeah, that's a great tool, great resource. Um, I do have kind of a nuts and bolts question kind of within that space. And either the transactional players in some of these affordable programs, are they also taking discounted fees? For some of the work that they do, brokers, banks that we're working with, are we seeing?
That's an interesting question. Um, I, I know like Habitat for Humanity often partners with architects and civil engineers that are offering their services at an induced rate. Um, affordable housing lenders, um, I think oftentimes they're working with their own subsidies. So they're able to offer better uh, terms or um, not charge specific fees. So it's kind of a large world, depending on where you land of who's able to offer what. But there is an industry kind of set up, um, nonprofits and things of that nature aimed at reducing the normal charges. That are associated with development when dealing with affordable housing projects. Did you, did you have a specific thing in mind when you mentioned that?
No, just, just kind of looking at the totality of, you know, um.
But underlying engineers, planners, architects, they all still need to get paid. So um, you know, there might be reduced rates, but I, I can't actually speak to what those look like.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner White.
Um, I know that like on the big project, um, what is it, L, L?
Three?
Three? So they, they are selling those through, um, I think they're just like the real estate brokers are. Have a reduced compensation and then buyers basically have no representation. So I think it's like half the amount. Um, and then also I know that the bank that they're working with, um, part of the negotiations was that they were gonna provide a reduced interest rate. So not only is the, the purchase price less, but it's also a reduced interest rate, which like hugely impacts their monthly costs. So it is happening and that's how many units for sale?
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight and I'm seeing them going pending every single day.
That's amazing.
Yeah, so.
I might have a phone call to you tomorrow to review that.
They're doing well.
Thank you for that.
Oh, I did have one more question. On the, on the rental um, program with the partnership? So does that work? Can you explain how that works? So that basically you have these thirteen partners and any of their employees?
So I just clicked, yeah, I just clicked on and here's more information about that. And we actually list the business names here, the eleven that are participating. So it, it, this is in a pilot stage, so what?
Right.
We set it up because we weren't quite sure how it's gonna work. We weren't quite sure if it's gonna make the impact that we want. And so we set it up as a pilot so that we're not committing to this forever. And everyone that enters that, at least this is here for twelve months, upon which we will evaluate it with our boards and commissions to see if it's something, if it's been successful, if we want to continue doing it. Um, so those eleven businesses at the side signed up for one employee at this time.
Okay.
Um, we were going to allow one employee and then if we have more funding, we might go back and say, do you have another employee that you want to do? Which I think we're currently in the process of evaluating, because we had to go through with everyone's income level. This is based on how much you're spending as part of your income, so very tailored to each person. To know how much money we were gonna have left in the pot at the end. And so what this is, let's say you're spending forty percent of your income on your housing. This program is aimed at reducing that, the ten percent, to get you down to an acceptable level, which is considered to be thirty percent. So that ten percent difference in your rent is going to be split and subsidized by uh, two C funding and the employer. So let's just say you're six hundred dollars over and three hundred dollars is going to be put in by your employer. And then we are matching that three hundred dollars um, with two C funding.
Very cool.
Yeah, it's a great way to get buy-in so that it's not just the city, that it's also employers. Cause we recognize businesses have a very large role to play here. Um, in how employees can afford to be in this community. So it was great to see at least these eleven agree with that statement.
Without them having to go out and purchase their own housing.
Exactly, yeah, we're partners, right? So that was kind of the, the achievement here is we'll help you if you help us.
Commissioner Sipley.
Been looking at the list, um, I, it makes me wonder what happens when either a business closes or an employee is either terminated or decides to leave. Uh, I mean, maybe it's digging too far into this, but how does that happen if either employment changes? Uh, for instance, the Blue Door Boutique, isn't where it used to be, I don't know if it's still there.
Sorry?
It's there.
Is it, did it move? Uh, I'm trying to think where they.
Well, it was next to the art shop, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're actually closer to us now.
Yeah, around the corner.
More west, next to the Rocky Mountain Pizza.
Oh, okay.
Yes, but that's a good point, we have mechanisms in place, you know, for changes that occur. Um, obviously if your living situation changes as well, we have checkups on that. And, and a lot of this reporting, since we're partnering with the business itself, is actually really helpful. Because they've got all of that immediate information that, that we're working with as well.
Does it allow for roommate situations?
Um, you know, I'm gonna say Commissioner Sipley, that you should come to Mortgage Commons. Yeah, on Thursday.
Is it like a seminar that takes place over two hours or is it a drop in and get information thing?
Definitely the drop in and get information.
You don't have to commit to two hours?
You do not have to commit to two hours.
Okay, good.
No. Um, and I only say that, this is, this, this is probably one of the most complex um, housing programs that we set up. It was very challenging and broke my brain and also workforce housing brain. And there's some big brains on that commission. Um, so those details were thought of and thoroughly gone through to make sure. But also I will say, that's why we set it up as a pilot program. Because inevitably we will see things like, oh, that didn't quite work. Um, we need um, something to vet that a little bit more thoroughly or what happens in this situation, we hadn't thought of that, so.
And I see the importance of having a manager for that program.
Oh, my God.
You don't have to do it all. Good job, thank you, and I look forward to meeting Kevin.
Uh, Commissioner Callen. Yeah, I guess kind of want to check in on where you are in this presentation, because I wanted to talk about something specifically around the. Uh, mobile home park acquisition, is this an okay time?
Absolutely, I kind of give you guys an overview, Kevin would have done a much more thorough job, but we'll bring him back at other times to keep you updated on program. Don't ask away.
And this is just from what I heard this morning from Aspen Public Radio about the two up valley.
Yes.
Mobile home parks being under contract and there's a hundred and twenty day window for a match or a beat to that bid, is that?
So um, this is regulated under a program called M H Pop, that's what I call it. Mobile Home Park, I forget the rest of the acronym. Anyways, there are state regulations on how mobile home parks operate. Um, and there are good regulations that have been put in place when a mobile home park goes for sale. Um, and so there's two up valley that have currently been listed. And we also have some in City of Glenwood Springs, we have one in West Glenwood that was currently listed. The owner of the park has to notify um, all of the residents when they put it up for sale and also notify when they get um, an offer made. Those residents have a specific timeline to be able to make an offer to own the park themselves and create what is referred to as a resident owned community, a rock. Um, and so it's a hundred and twenty days, which I'm sure the real estate agent on the dais can tell you, it goes really fast. Especially if you have to organize fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty people um, that are at different stages of life and the funding that goes along with it, because these are not cheap. Um, mobile home park preservation is identified in the comprehensive plan. And also uh, the Workforce Housing Advisory Board's implementation plan, and we are working on that. You will see a recommendation um, that's coming to council on the mobile home park that is within the City of Glenwood Springs for a financial support. What's going on up valley is obviously outside of our jurisdiction, but I was just on a meeting for those mobile home parks yesterday. Um, and so there is organizing from the different jurisdictions who have a um, strong interest in the, in that preservation happening as well. So uh, what I would say is it's not mandated for subsidies or financial support to happen from jurisdictions. But just because preservation of naturally occurring affordable housing is very important and the displacement of those individuals, no one really wants. We kind of know what that will result in impact wise. Um, jurisdictions mobilize pretty quickly when that occurs. And we are also on the notification list when they go for sale.
Okay, and so I guess when that offer comes in, starts that tolling that hundred and twenty day window.
Clock.
That, I guess that's blocked, right? There's not dickering then that can occur between the current owner and that initial offeree, correct? Like it's.
Sorry.
The, that offer is essentially sealed and then that, okay, so there's not a, a back and forth about.
Yeah, it can't be accepted with it, like they can't move forward with that in that time period. They, it allows the residents to organize and put forward a counter offer or the first offer in some cases. And a lot of times you're gonna have park owners that are really um, open to working with the residents and then some that are obviously, um, you know, circumstances are different.
Good, thank you.
Just an acronym for that. Do you know if they have to match the offer? Is, I mean, it kind of functions like a first right of refusal and they have to match it financially and, you know, most terms? Or does it somehow um, favor the residents?
There's not a favoring.
Um, there's not, so like.
The residents could put forward an offer that is below the.
Closest ten days after the uh, competing offer.
It is up to the park owner which offer they accept.
That's scary.
So that's why a lot of organization and um, financial support, because you can't match a twenty million dollar offer with five million. That's, that's too far away.
Yeah.
Um, so trying to close that gap. And then you know, what you'll, we'll keep you guys updated on what happens with that recommendation. I don't wanna speak too much of it because it hasn't gone to council yet. But it did come out of Workforce Housing Advisory Board to help those residents. Um, and once they own it, it, it's kind of an analysis of, you know, the amount of funding it's going to take to purchase the park. They'll have to raise their lot rents a considerable amount. And so funding will help them reduce that amount as they pay that loan off.
Yeah. And, and so do they get um, a copy of the, the competing offer? So they know what they're up against or is it like a blind situation?
I don't actually know the answer to that question.
Our presumption. I mean, I would think you would.
I mean, there's I will ask MHPOP.
Asking MHPOP.
My pop. Awesome. That's all I have for you guys tonight.
Thank you very much, Hannah. Good job. You spent a bunch of time up there. Smooth walk. Must be that Mexican drink you had. Non-alcoholic, I'm sure.
Mexican air?
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, we're just talking about the vacation, not just now.
No, no, no. Under, that's why she kept going down. Um, okay, um, I think we're moving on to Commissioner Comments. It's the next item. We'll just run down the line here.
I'm good. Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just really appreciate that the city is trying to preserve mobile homes.
Okay. Commissioner Hutton?
Uh, I just want to say that I was a little disappointing. And let me preface this with the I appreciate all the staff workings, not directed at staff, that uh, we spent time and effort on that code amendment recommendation and it failed five one. I don't know how we got to that point. Uh, it seems like we need to try and avoid. I don't know how we avoid that in the future, but um.
Which one was this?
Okay, you'll chat about that.
Uh, and I would love to look at the lighting code.
Okay, and then so that, so duplex, triplex, that was one. And then Canyon Vista, I'd just like to hear what came out of that from council and um, and then how your permitting process, your new permitting process that you spent five years working on. Now that's kinda coming out too. Um, okay, so Hannah.
Awesome. Um, so for, I'll start with next month. We have a full schedule, a couple code amendments and also a variance application. Um, so hopefully, uh, let me know if you won't be around so I can let these lovely individuals know that they need to read the thousand pages.
I will not be here.
Okay, we got one. I don't, I don't actually think it'll it's looking like a healthy five hundred. Um, okay, and then as far as updates with council. So yes, the code amendment, the zoning reform duplex and triplex did not pass at council. Um, a little bit of background and explanation there. Council asked for something and had an idea about how they might be able to move that needle forward. And in the application of that, where staff takes this recommendation and tries to then present something, uh, we found that the exact thing that they asked for was not, we were not legally capable of doing. Fun. Um, and so we'll just blame Carl. Um, so you know, legal advises us of things that we can and can't do. Um, we have parameters as well, shucks. Um, and so what we found is the exact thing that they were looking for, that we understood entirely why they wanted. We were not capable of doing. What we presented to you and eventually to council was a creative way to try and get at their intent. But what happened, they did not believe it really got at their intent and they weren't able to get that across the line. Um, that's a challenging topic that had a lot of public engagement, so those are tough. Um, we tried, doesn't mean that we won't try crazy ideas later. Um, so that, that's kind of the background on that one. I appreciate you guys taking the time.
Yeah, so, uh, and maybe this is what John's kinda getting at too, but is there, is there any learning there from us to have? We had much conversation and consternation as we went through it.
I, I think that the lesson I would take away from it is that there this community is very divided on the subject of housing and, uh, and I think um, property values and how affluent of a community we are and how that all is being put in the, the mixer and coming out as sausage right now. And I think it is very difficult at that political level to try to figure out the right way to navigate it and highlight the right set of issues um, that need to get pushed forward with all of the competing interests that they have in front of them right now. Uh, in a very challenging time, that's getting more challenging. And so I think that's a lot of it is that sometimes coming out of the planning department or the planning commission, we are hyper-focused on good planning. And sometimes that runs into a lot of competing interests when it hits the council. Um, I don't envy them their job because they're trying to balance a bunch of competing needs to get that stuff, to get things done. So I don't, I don't have any great advice on how to not have it happen again. I think potentially just, you know, those sit downs where you guys have conversations around it and especially we'll try to get something scheduled soon with the new council to get to know them. Um, because it's a different set of personalities now than just made that decision. Um, I have no idea. I don't have a great feel for where the new group, you know, how that's going to coalesce, how the three new members are gonna feel about those issues. Um, but I, I think that's really all it's reflective of is just when it hits the dais in front of council, there's a lot of competing interests that they're trying to balance and trying to think about how to move the whole city forward and not just that one particular issue in the moment.
Possible last question.
Commissioner Kellin. Thank you. Uh, is it, so kinda going back to the genesis of that special meeting and I believe that came out of a request from Counselor Godis during Counselor Comment. Um, is it possible to um, steer council so that if they do want to request an action by the commission for a special meeting to take up something, that it's brought upon by motion so that we can get an idea?
Uh, yeah, and that was actually one of our, you know, something that was kind of learned out of that, if you will. I think I think council was trying to get to an end of a meeting and probably didn't pause long enough to think their way through that one or else I think that might not have come to a special meeting in the same way, frankly.
Sure.
And I think that's a lesson that was kind of learned and I think certainly Marco sitting as the new mayor, having been in the position of being requested for special meetings for things is, um, I think very cognate of how much time is being asked of boards and commissions to then have council, you know, maybe not deal with it with the same gravity that, that it feels like you guys had to go through.
Thanks.
So, yes, I appreciate all the work you guys put in and the special meeting that you pulled off to get that done. Um, and I don't wanna apologize, but your, your work was valid and that will happen occasionally. Um, but we continue to work on things and we learn from them.
Yeah, and, and actually I was gonna say that process for me was really interesting, not that that matters to you necessarily. But from a dra- from a drafting standpoint, because we're, we're running into some issues with recently changed statutes. And I'll tell you what the issue we ran into, which is, is that buried in the non-moratorium language uh, that was passed last year was you can't put numerical caps on growth. And so that creates, you know, it was a simple solution to just say, look, we're gonna try this and we'll do twenty-five units and see how it goes. Well, with the inability to put a numerical cap, it forces us to think about different ways to address this on a broader basis. And, and I think that's where you know, I, from my standpoint, it was a really good conversation and a good recognition that we're going to be running into this again and at least now we have a roadmap of how to maybe deal with it.
Staff threw spaghetti at the wall. It didn't stick this time, but that doesn't mean it won't next time.
Say something.
I was just gonna say, I, I believe it's annual, on an annual basis for numerical caps. I know of a local jurisdiction that did semi-annual basis.
Yeah, and I think there's, um, is this the one that we wanted to try to, I mean, especially given the other politics around this, was this the one that we wanted to play too much with? Probably not, was kind of where I came down from a, from a legal standpoint of let's stay inside. Whether you call them guardrails or actually gutters, um, on a bowling alley. Let's, let's keep it inside.
The rails, it never goes in the gutter. That's a true flip. You know, a bin's going down. Okay.
Okay, now on to an update on something that did pass, which was the Canyon Vista project. So council unanimously approved that low-income housing tax credit apartment complex. Um, that is going to be located in West Glenwood. So that was great news and your support was um, obviously reviewed and very extensive minutes on all the conversations. You guys should go. I don't normally give you guys minutes that are that extensive, but I almost verbatim type what you guys say when it's going to council so they know exactly the conversation that you had and all the concerns that were a part of it, so.
If anyone would like an update on the greenhouse?
You would like an update?
So the Glenwood Gardens Greenhouse, as you know, is on that parcel where the approval occurred and, um, Marco said to the Historic Preservation Commission a couple of weeks ago, hey, council is interested in seeing that greenhouse saved and maybe serve as the city's botanic botanical garden. Uh, and they're talking about the area earmarked as a public park down here near the confluence sort of behind the funeral home. So the Glenwood Garden Club is getting established as a proper five oh one C three and looking to, um, find out more about the greenhouse. Find out if our remaining bits of it, there might, there might not be other pieces of it that were in Redstone. All of the pieces came here and were put together in nineteen thirty-nine, but they're not all there now. Um, but the owners are keen to have it relocated. The developers seemed absolutely amenable. They did offer it to Peking County first, who is having drone surveys done and a structural engineer come and look at it. But, um, Marco at least and, um, um, Aaron were there and seemed interested in collaborating on seeing it saved and relocated elsewhere in Glenwood Springs.
Why did they offer it to Peking County?
That's where it used to be in Redstone.
I get that, but it's
They have a lot more money too. So, uh, there is public interest. I'm not joining their Facebook or anything, but I'm sort of reacting as a liaison for the Historic Preservation Commission and as an interested party to see what I can find and help them with. Um, and anybody else is probably welcome to join as a community garden club member for twenty dollars.
Yeah, that's cool. Great update.
So, and I'll ask something on that too, and I don't, maybe, maybe you already beat this horse enough last time. But on, 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 on the whole legal thing that came up, that, um, that you were counseling us on for, for, well, but, 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 but for, well, it was, it was interesting because you kind of talked about it in our conversation on the comp plan of, of, of how we base our decisions on, based on the information that we had and that wasn't anything that we had in our packet as we came forth. And then, then we find out we're kind of bombarded on that.
Yeah, and I have to, I, I mean, I, I didn't, I didn't realize they would, you know, take that tact, um, obviously. Um, I do think the way you can rely on, um, like we do with any sort of, I mean, West Glenwood is interesting because it's not our wastewater system, so there is going to be a can and will serve letter in a packet from West Glenwood Sanitation. Um, similarly, there was a can, just because we knew that, you, you know, just to clarify the issue, we, we issued a can and will serve letter from the city utility as well. A lot of times we necessary to be that specific and clear about it. Um, but from your standpoint, that, you know, that's what we would ask of any other developer. Um, and, you know, we have to, you know, when I kind of divorce myself from one department or entity from another, you know, we don't go, well, you know what? I don't really believe West Glenwood sand when they say they have capacity, right? So we have to kind of take those utility providers at face value, whether it's, you know, the natural gas company or it's the Glenwood Electric or it's Glenwood Water or it's West Glenwood Sand. When they say they have capacity and the ability to serve, we kind of take that at face value.
Thank you. What, how, how, how's your permitting process going?
Um, it's going well. Um, it's going well. It's busy. Staff is still, you know, working out some of the kinks that we expected to be involved and we've gotten a lot of feedback. Um, I'll be honest, there are some people that really don't like it. They, um, prefer to turn in a paper application and so that has been hard um, for some people and we understand that and we've been trying to be as accommodating as we can to help them um, transition and help them input it into the system. But from a staff perspective, it's really working great for us to track things, um, so much better than we were doing before. It's really easy to go in and see exactly where something is at and we've had a lot of comments from the public and applicants that that is great for them to be able to see as well. They can see, you know, that it's currently in review with engineering and planning. They can see that Victor needs, um, changes on the site plan, um, and dimensions listed on the portico. Um, all of those things. And so it's very transparent and that's been helpful. Um, so we really like it.
Upstairs to help if people wanna like fill out the form. You're like, here, we're gonna help you.
Yep, we have active computers actually on the first floor and on the second floor that we will sit down with you and help you. And we also help people, um, start. Um, we can, we can view what they're doing so we can kind of help work through problems. Um, so we're still, we're allowing a lot of people um, into comm dev so that we can help them through that process if they're struggling. But, um, I would say there's, you know, it's a learning curve, but there's a lot of people that it's very intuitive for. Um, they're usually around the ages of eighteen to thirty. It's been great for them. And we have an amazing, um, community development technician that falls into that age group who's been just fantastic about helping applicants. So, um, Haley Paris, who is the newest employee to community development, is really pulling her weight.
Awesome. Awesome. Good. Okay, well, thank you very much. Well, I think we are adjourned. Good. Okay, well, thank you very much. Well, I think we are adjourned.